Okay, Madam Chair, we are ready.
Okay, thank you. Good morning. Welcome to the first meeting of 2021 for the Calaveras Board of Supervisors. If you can, please stand. We're going to do the pledge. Thank you. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. Before I move to the election of the Chair and the Vice Chair, there's a few things I'd like to address, taking that prerogative. It was a challenging year for all of county staff, and I want to thank them for the yeoman's work in serving the public. We've all learned a new vocabulary and concepts, starting with COVID-19, Zoom, PPP, PPE, positivity rates, COVID testing, CARES Act, stay-at-home orders, yellow, orange, red, purple, tiers, briefings with the City of Angels, who, by the way, welcome. But there are other tasks that we have accomplished this year. The old jail is down, the five-year capital improvement program in Public Works, job order contract program, the Butte Fire repairs, voter approval of Measure G, adult-use sales. None of you have to tell me if you're going. No hemp, expanded outdoor dining, OES Community Information Center web age, limited-density owner rural dwellings, built rural dwellings, zoning ordinance update, and as you know, we'll be seeing more of that in the agenda. Lisa Medina appointed the department head, Rebecca Turner and her staff in the Elections Department for their creativity in the multitude of ways we ought to vote this year. The sheriff is exempt for gate fees at Rock Creek, and of course, the knuckle boom crane for use by the Ad Commissioner. Staff has not been daunted by the enormity of the work ahead, and I look forward to working with the new Chair and my colleagues as we move into 2021. All right, I move to the election of the Chair and Vice Chair. Is there a motion?
Madam Chair, this is Supervisor Garamendi.
Supervisor Garamendi.
I'd like to nominate Ben Stopper as Chair.
A motion by Supervisor Garamendi for Mr. Stopper as Chair. Is there a second?
I will second.
Well, if nobody seconds it, okay. Thank you, Supervisor. I urge you.
I will second, Maria.
I know. Thank you, Gary. A second by Supervisor Toffenelli. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Passes on. Mr. Stopper, did you vote?
I gave an aye. You want? Yes, yes, ma'am.
I mean, Mr. Stopper will be the Chair. Mr. Stopper, you can please take over for the motion for the Vice Chair.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just want to say thank you all. You know, sitting by Maria's side this last year, she brought up some very good points. You know, it hasn't been an easy year, and we appreciate all the work that you put in this last year, Ms. Calloway. With that, I'll take a motion for Vice Chair.
I move Amanda Follendorf as Vice Chair.
Okay, we got a motion by Ms. Calloway. Do we have a second on Amanda Follendorf for Vice Chair?
I will second, since she beat me to the vote.
Thank you for your second, Mr. Toffenelli. With that, I'm gonna, you know, so no confusion moving forward. I'm gonna do a roll call, roll call vote. Just, so, all those in favor, District One?
Yes.
District Two?
District Two, aye.
District Three?
Yes.
District Four?
Yes.
And I, District Five, am a yes also. Thank you. So, congratulations, Amanda Follendorf, Ms. Vice Chair.
Thank you.
These are, these are two districts. I mean, I have to say, it's been well over a decade since District Five seemed Chair. You know, I believe the last Chair for District Four was Debbie Pawnee, I believe, thirteen, 2013 or 2014. It's a long wait, and we look forward, or at least I look forward to be able to represent Calaveras County as a whole and especially my district. With that said, do we have any staff announcements?
Hi, this is Kathy Galino. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Awesome. Kathy Galino, Calaveras County Economic and Community Development. Just with a quick update regarding the California Relief Grant Program that the state has put out. The first round of grant applications will close tomorrow at 11:59 PM. So, businesses that need help with grant funding, this is a grant, so it's not a loan. And it's really targeted for our small businesses that have been impacted from COVID, have lost wages, have lost employees, have problems paying utility bills and whatnot. I just want to let folks know that they need to go to ca-reliefgrants.com. And if anybody has questions, please reach out to me, call me directly, send me an email. I'm here to help. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Galino. Will there be any other staff announcements? With, with that, I would like to move on, unless somebody does have some more staff announcements, to item number two, Public Health Update. Receive an update presentation from staff on COVID-19 novel coronavirus. This will be a joint discussion with the City of Angels Camp. Thank you, and Mr. Leach.
Good morning.
Good to see you.
Thank you. Good to see you as well. So, good morning, everyone. I'm Sam Leach. I am your interim Health and Human Services Director. I took over this role on December 22nd, and this is our first board meeting since that date. I want to thank the board for giving me the incredible opportunity of leading us through these next few months of what is sure to be the most challenging time of the entire pandemic. Please understand that these first 12 working days, there's been a lot of holidays in here since, since I was appointed, these first 12 days, I've really been focused on, you know, my own learning curve and getting us to a point where we're executing behind the scenes as much as, as much as I believe we possibly can. And every day has been a bit of growth. And today, I feel like, you know, hopefully, we're gonna start turning the corner and communicating with the public in a much more assertive way to make sure that we're providing clarity for people who need clarity, because we definitely recognize that need. At the same time, you know, I've been in this job since December 22nd, and bear with me for needing to get through my own learning curve and blend into a team that is already putting just a ton of work into this, and that includes all of you. Let me start with the most exciting update, which is, so far to date, we've put 580 vaccines into arms. So, I know that there's some miscommunication out in the public. There's a lot of stuff floating around and a lot of things to clarify. But our Public Health Team and Mark Twain together have done 580 vaccines as of this morning. A lot of those were firefighters and EMTs and medical personnel and basically, you know, preparing the people who are responsible for a lot of things moving forward to make sure that they're safe, to be able to help with this process moving forward. And then also, there's been the vaccination of the assisted living population. Aside from the populations that we already mentioned, I want to start moving to what our plan is currently and what our plan is moving forward. Doug Archer, do we have you on? Doug Archer from Mark Twain, are you on? There you are, Doug. I see him on the screen, so we'll give him a second. You good, Doug?
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Very good. All right, my profile picture is my better-looking canine companion. Yeah, so thanks, Sam. Thank you to the Board of Supervisors. Good way to kick off a new year is talking about how we start slowing and putting an end to this pandemic. So, for that, for that end, next week, on Monday, Mark Twain plans to launch a vaccine clinic to address that Tier 1B category, which is 75 and older. We plan to host this clinic in San Andreas. We're still working out some of the workflow details, so I don't have the exact location yet, but if you all know kind of where our clinics are down below the hospital, it'll be down there. It'll be in one of our three clinic locations down there. So, our plan is to publish the details of our clinic by Thursday morning. There'll be a phone number. We will be scheduling these appointments. It is not going to be a first-come, first-served, so we will be scheduling, and the main reason is to keep some order to it, but also, there's a limited supply of vaccine. So, we want to make sure that we don't overbook and have to turn people away at the end of the day. Our goal on the first day is to provide 100 vaccinations to really just to work out our processes, make sure we got everything in order. And after that first day, we'll make, you know, whatever tweaks we need to do to make it a streamlined process. Then we think we can ramp up to probably 2 to 250 vaccines a day after that. We'll keep the clinic going as long as we have to. Right now, I believe we're gonna be able to offer that clinic four days a week. Again, it depends on vaccine availability. But we plan to launch, so just to recap, we plan to launch this on Monday. That would be January 18th. It'll be in San Andreas. We will work with the county on making sure we blast out this information to as many places and people as possible. The phone number will be published on that information. You will call, schedule your appointment. We'll validate age, that you're 75 or over, and we are doing everything we can to keep this for our Calaveras residents. So, we will be asking for mailing address and Calaveras mailing address. Of course, we'll be validating that when you show up for the vaccination. We'll also be able to take care of some of the pre-screening registration type things over the phone when you schedule your appointment. In addition, when you schedule your appointment for your first dose of your vaccine, we will be scheduling the appointment for your second dose. As you probably all know, it's a two-dose regimen for the vaccine. Depending on the Moderna or Pfizer, it's either a three-week or a four-week interval between. But we're gonna schedule dose two when we schedule dose one to ensure that the person comes back to complete the regimen. I think that's the basic details. Again, Thursday morning, if not sooner, we'll be publishing that information. We'll work with the county to make sure that gets out to everyone. And when you see the information, please share it. We are not, this is, so this is an open clinic, meaning you do not have to be a Mark Twain Medical Center patient to call and get scheduled. We will also not be charging for the vaccine. So, again, open to anybody. There's no insurance requirement, no payment requirement, nothing like that. We're just trying to help our county get ahead of this pandemic and praying for a bright, sunshiny summer where we can all be out and about and enjoying the beautiful land of Calaveras.
Thank you, Mr. Archer. If you don't mind, I just have a couple of quick questions, and thank you for bringing up the, the vaccines. I, as well, I'm sure, as many of my colleagues have received a lot of emails recently, mostly from our more elderly populations that are of more grave concern. You did mention, you know, about the supply chain, and, you know, you could probably administer as fast as you get, get the vaccines in. The other issue is, as you get them in, you need to make sure that, that, that second installment of vaccines is on hand. Is that correct?
Correct, yeah.
Yeah, so at that point, you know, you're, you're scheduling two, two different times, three to four weeks, depending on the time, whether it's Pfizer or not. And within that time, you need to hold on to a second one, because it's useless, basically, if you only take the first one and they miss the second appointment.
Correct.
Okay. So, that has a little bit to do with your supply chain, correct?
Yeah, exactly. That's why we don't want to, you know, get too far ahead of ourselves. Yep, exactly.
I appreciate, I appreciate the answers. I appreciate your time. And it's good that, you know, publicly, you've let the community know that you are working on it, and we, hopefully, we can distribute it as fast as we get the vaccines into the people that need it and want it. Is there any other board members that would like to ask any questions?
Ben, I have a question.
Go ahead, Mr. Toffenelli.
What is the time, thank you. What is the timeframe between the first dose and the second dose?
So, we'll more than likely be using the Moderna vaccine next week, so it'd be four weeks. So, if you, if you get your vaccine, your first dose on Monday, the 18th, you'd be coming back four weeks later for your second dose.
So, for those four weeks, you can't assume that you're immune to the, to the virus. You have to wait till you get your second dose to be immune to it. We need to get that out there to the people so they understand that. Once they get their first dose, they can't just go out and say, "I've got my vaccine," that they have a four-week timeframe until they get their second dose, that they'll be immune.
Well, and technically, according to the literature, it's actually about seven to 10 days after your second dose where you reach peak immunity. So, it's really about a little more than five weeks from your initial dose before you have peak immunity.
Very good. Thank you.
And Doug, do you still have a few minutes to hang around through the rest of my presentation, and then if there's more questions specific to Mark Twain to be available for that?
Yeah, definitely. And if, and if you'd like at the end, I can give you just kind of a quick update on where we're at with COVID and patient load.
My apologies, Sam. I'll let you finish with your, with your update, and then I'll, then I'll interrupt.
That's okay. I know everybody's, you know, excited to hear this information, which is completely my fault, because I've been the one, you know, kind of working through a lot of things and getting the hour-by-hour changes that happen, even through last night, even as I'm waking up having coffee this morning. So, you know, the rate of, of information coming in right now and the changes that we're trying to keep up with, I understand the uncertainty and the want to jump in and ask questions. But hopefully, some of what I present will, will answer some of those before they're asked. And then, yeah, so we'll keep going. So, anyways, again, thank you, Doug, because I just think it's a fantastic announcement. I'm not sure if everybody understands the magnitude of it, but, you know, our 75 and over population is so important to get vaccinated right now, and it's a heavy lift. It's an incredibly heavy lift, and for Mark Twain to step up and do that, you know, free of cost for, for all those folks, whether they're, you know, patients of theirs or not in Calaveras County, I just think that's a fantastic show of their leadership and their partnership with us here. So, thank you, Doug. Along the same lines, I have an exciting announcement regarding schools, and that is that I was, I was messaging back and forth with Scott Nannick, our Superintendent of Schools at CCOE, late last night, and, you know, our teachers and other school personnel are incredibly safe, and we want our schools open for in-person learning. So, I'm incredibly excited to announce that our school districts, in collaboration with our Public Health Team, have a plan to begin the vaccination process for staff and teachers beginning next week. So, thank you to Scott. Thank you to the school nurses who are working with our team, and also thank you to the Public Health Team who's just got a lot to juggle right now, and this is a huge piece of it. I know how important open schools are to our community, and it's been one of our many, many, many priorities here. Additionally, you know, having these efforts and having the schools step up and the school nursing team step up, having Mark Twain step up, knowing that other vaccinators are, will be coming on board as this thing progresses, and some of our vaccinators are able to be fully vaccinated themselves. There was a lot of vaccinateds, so I apologize. Hopefully, you're following. Stop me if I go too fast. But the collateral benefit to the community is that it also frees up Public Health to be able to continue vaccinating other groups, right? So, these are groups that, if, if the schools and if Mark Twain hadn't stepped up, you know, that's still on us at Public Health to continue working through those early groups. So, it's exciting stuff for us as well to be able to continue vaccinating people and, and maybe get to our first responders a little bit sooner, get to our police folks, our jails, and all the other groups that are, that are coming in the very, very near future. Okay, so, another thing, we're trying to get you clarity every day. I've gotten a lot of public feedback. I understand that a lot of people are scared. Some people are just flat-out angry at us for not giving them more information as we go. And the one thing I don't want to do is point the finger at the state and try to make excuses for our lack of communication. That said, the release of a local vaccine tier schedule, our release, has not been approved yet. The state keeps telling us, "Hold off, hold off, hold off," and that's because the complexity of making sure that we administer the vaccines in a safe, effective, and equitable manner, right? And so, the state continues to add people to these tiers, make adjustments, and that has been a little bit of the reason for the slow start, so to speak. But our slow start is, is more of a statewide and really nationwide issue more than it is locally. Locally, we're keeping up and we're beating some of the percentages that you hear in the media. I know I had heard that only 30% statewide of the vaccines had been actually administered. We're beating that number locally. So, I want to assure people that, that we are moving forward. It's strategic. It's systematic. We do have to play by the state rules. That's where we get the vaccines, and we're working on it, okay? Now, last night, well, actually, let me take a step back. Let me tell you what we are doing for now. We're coordinating with the state on a very complex effort to give the vaccines in the, in the equitable manner that I described, right? We're playing by the rules. We are excited to launch a dashboard on our website by the end of the week to make sure that we're getting you the COVID data more efficiently, the stuff that's been in the press releases. We want that available for display when you want to see it. So, we expect to have that up and running by the end of the week. We're also opening the call center in coordination with OES, and we expect to have that up and running by Thursday at the latest. Trying to get it open by tomorrow, but I know we've had a, an understandable influx of calls, of people calling Public Health, asking, "When am I gonna get my vaccine? When am I gonna get my vaccine?" I mean, we hear it all day. We've had a lot of really frustrated people who don't even know if we're vaccinating, and that's a lot of what I'm trying to clear up today. So, hopefully, some of this is providing some clarity, and we'll be sure to follow through with more as we go. Chair Stopper, I'm not used to saying chairperson. Chair Stopper, do you need me to pause for anything yet, or can I keep going? I still got a few minutes here.
Yeah, let's finish up with your update, and then I'll bring Angels Camp into the discussion and let them do roll call, and then we'll go on with the questions.
Copy. Testing. So, I've covered vaccines in detail, because that has really turned to the hot topic over the last week or two, and it's such a critical part of long-term how we get out of this. The testing is still incredibly important. We recognize that need. That was, that has been a little bit of a looming crisis the past few weeks of whether we could get enough testing done. Thank you to Colleen Rodriguez, our Deputy Public Health Director, and her team at Public Health for really stepping up and challenging yourselves to increase testing. Last week, we had two clinics by Public Health where we tested over 240 people. So, we are still doing testing in the community. We continue to have two days of testing per week, and the way that that testing is working, we're having one set day at Ironstone beginning on November 19th. That's a Tuesday, and that will be every Tuesday at Ironstone. And then the other ones are gonna be rotating. So, I believe tomorrow, so those will be Wednesdays, and I believe tomorrow is Jenny Lind at Calaveras Consolidated Fire out in Valley Springs. So, we're doing two days a week of testing. Now, that's just our Public Health Team testing. I want to remind you that we still have the OptumServe site up in Sonora, and that's where a lot of testing is still going on. We're still having that site staffed, so it's a lot of testing opportunities for people out there. Let's see. So, keep in mind that you can follow the Public Health social media and the website, and, and if you want to know where testing is the following weeks, how far out in advance it is, all that kind of stuff, it's all on there. We also added an infographic. I missed this during vaccines, but we did add an infographic late last night. Thank you to our Public Health Team again, because they've been working late and at least tried to put something on there to say, "Here's, here's our tiers locally the best we can without going against anything in the state." So, I apologize that it's not super-specific yet. It is always subject to change, and I imagine there will be constant changes to that infographic as we move forward, but at least there's something to give you a rough idea of how, of where we're at and where we're going here. Okay. Now, what you guys are used to getting first, and I apologize if my order sounds a little different than, than my predecessor. I'm just not that eloquent or sharp, so I'm working on it. But as of the last press release, we had 922 confirmed cases. We had 31 active cases. We had 22 fatalities. Our county status is, it is widespread. The regional stay-at-home order remains in place, and that is an interesting exploration in state analytics in itself as to how we get out of it. We do remain in the San Joaquin region. I know there's been questions as to whether we can leave that. I have not, I do not believe that that's realistically gonna happen. It's predetermined tiers before the pandemic, so I believe that we are in the San Joaquin region. I also believe that all of those regions are still gonna be on the regional stay-at-home order for quite a while. Right now, it's, it's based on four-week projections moving forward on ICU capacity, and we need the ICU capacity to be above 15% in our region. Now, Mark Twain, from what I understand, is still hanging in there. I don't know if Doug will want to give a more specific update on that, but Mark Twain is hanging in there compared to other hospitals in our region. Mark Twain is also a pretty small hospital compared to some of the other hospitals in our region. And keep in mind that at any point, that can change. It can change because the surge is continuing to catch up to us as far as how many active cases we have, and then how many end up needing to be in ICU. And then it can also change because of the requirement that we could have beds, we could have people transferred to us from the valley on pretty much a moment's notice at any time. And because of that, it all remains a very, very tenuous situation. Okay, last thing I have, and then I will open it up to questions, and that is just that I want to very briefly share that on December 30th, I was one of the people who was fortunate enough to get my first vaccine shot. So, that was, that was pretty early. I mean, these things had just gotten here. There was a lot of fear. I have a lot of friends that, that remain afraid of, of getting the vaccine, or maybe they just don't want to be first. You know, they, they want to have the immunity. They want to have the anti- You know, they, they want to have the immunity, they want to have the antibodies, but maybe they just didn't want to be first. And I just want to share with you that anecdotally, I got the shot, it was safe, it was quick. I didn't have any side effects, a little bit of a sore arm. But I was surprised at how I was overcome, just kind of with emotion, with everything that we've been through, everything our business owners have been through, our kids. You know, my daughter graduated high school this last year at Calaveras, and, and I think of everything that, as a community, we've been through. The vaccines are not the end-all of that, but I, I did have the, the feeling at that moment that it's the beginning of the end. The vaccines are going to play a big role, and if you are interested in getting the vaccine or learning more about it, I encourage you to talk to your doctors. You know, I encourage you to reach out now, because you don't know when the vaccine is coming to you as of right now. That's not the time to, you know, pause and think about it. Now is the time to get the information that you need to get to make a safe decision, okay? So with that, I will unceremoniously turn it over to questions from the board.
Thank you, Mr. Leach. We, you know, you've crossed a large gap in a short amount of time. We thank you for stepping up during these, these times into the position. Takes a lot of heart, so it's appreciated. With that, I would like to bring Angels Camp into the conversation. I haven't provided them an opportunity to do roll call for those that are in the meeting yet, so I'll give that now, and then I'll start proceeding with questions to the Board of Supervisors and, and Angels Camp. Are we going to do roll call?
Yes, we'll do roll call. And for the city, Mayor Bolio.
Here.
Vice Mayor Jennifer Herndon.
Here.
Here.
Councilmember Gretel Tescornia.
Here.
Councilmember Jeremy Leonard.
Here.
Councilmember Isabel Mancada.
Present.
We're all here.
Okay. We'll start off with the board. Is there any questions or anything that you have for the, for Mr. Leach or Mr. Archer? I would take that as we're fine for now, so let's proceed on to Angels Camp. Four new faces. Nice hat, Mr. Leonard. So is, is there any questions? Mr. Bolio, I see you up.
Good morning, Mr. Stopper. I just want to say congratulations to you, and congratulations to Ms. Follendorf to start off, and tell Sam thank you for a great update, and I appreciate it. So the only question that I can think of is, for me, on the, on the, on the vaccines or the getting of the vaccines, is there any chance, and I don't know if this is for Mr. Archer, or, but let's say like City of Angels, Calaveras Lumber, Save Mart, CCWD, Calaveras Telephone, some of the bigger businesses in the, in the county, can, can we have somebody, can you have somebody come to those places of work and administer the vaccines there? Or is that not an option?
It's a fair question. We're really early in this. I, I think, you know, logistically, right now, I think it's unrealistic, and I, and I do have my deputy public health director on here, and I might encourage her to take this one, because she's probably cringing with me making promises we can't keep. But I think it's a little unrealistic because of the complexity and needing to make sure that we have, you know, we need large parking lots, we need to monitor people when they get the shot to make sure nobody has a reaction for 15 minutes after. We need to make sure that we're doing it, that we're giving the vaccines to people who are registered. So there, there's a lot of complexity that goes into this. Colleen, I see that you're unmuted, so I'm going to let you bail me out here.
First, Sam, this is Alvin. We don't have to go into super depth. It was just a quickie comment, just a question. And I know we're going to roll into Phase 1B, 1C, and there's, and things will change every single day. It was just kind of a point of topic is all. So no need to go into super detail on it. I, I thank you very much, Sam.
Got it. Point taken, and I, and I do think that accessibility to the vaccine is, is a huge consideration of our team, and, and we're working through that. So whatever we can do to make it as convenient as possible for people, we can, but obviously it's, it's a balancing act, so thank you.
Is there any other, Angels Camp, oh, Mr. Her, Ms. Herndon?
Thanks, Ben. I do, I have two questions, actually. I have one for Mr. Leach, and also, if we can, one for Mr. Archer. Mr. Leach, how are we doing on the testing? How are we doing on contact tracing? Are we getting caught up? I had heard that there was some, some backlog, if you will. And then for Mr. Archer, can you touch on, I know we're subject to this region, like whatever our ICU capacity could be great, but we're at the liberty of not being able to say, open back up until the region's capacity falls beneath the, above or below the, the capacity desire. So is there any foresight on that? I, I heard four weeks, a minute ago, but I'm not sure what that means, if you could clarify.
Doug, you want to go first?
Sure. Yeah, so the, the regions and kind of how we go in and out of lockdown, you know, being grouped in the Central Valley region, I, I don't think is representative of Calaveras County. For instance, today, we have four ICU patients out of eight beds, so we're 50% capacity, which is much better than what we're seeing in the valley. So we don't really have, you know, the, the jurisdiction or the, the ability to, to change that. All we can do is try to help out, but, you know, our four out of eight-bed capacity is, is kind of a drop in the bucket when they're looking at the, you know, the goal of 15% or more capacity in the Central Valley region. I don't know the exact number of ICU beds in the Central Valley region, but it's, it's upwards of probably 400 or 500, if not more, easily more. Our eight beds isn't going to put it into that. So unfortunately, I don't think we're going to be able to, unless they change the guidelines at the, at the state level, I don't know that we're going to be able to have a huge impact on opening Calaveras up sooner than, say, Stockton.
And Councilmember Herndon, I, I appreciate the question about contact tracing. I was remiss in, in not getting into that. I had a lot of notes and flew through them, and I, and I think I missed a whole section. So yes, we continue to do contact tracing. It has been a matter of prioritization, right? So right now, we're in the depths of the surge. And you've heard the word surge, and it's like, okay, what, what does surge mean? You know, surge means that we're just seeing a spike in cases that we, we pretty much expected was coming. We knew that January, heading into the middle of January, and possibly into late January, depending on, on what people do, is going to be the toughest time that we've seen. And the numbers have borne that out, right? So with contact tracing, it's definitely been a challenge for our team, especially with a change in leadership and, and me coming in and saying vaccines are a priority, testing is a priority, right? So if everything's a priority, then nothing's a priority, right? The old adage. And frankly, we are still doing contact tracing, but right now, with the level of the surge, the thing that I need you guys to hear, and I, and I want the public to understand, is that you really need to proceed right now during the depths of the surge as if everybody that you come in contact with has COVID. Right? This isn't March or April where, you know, we were still asking each other, do you know anybody who's had it? Pretty much everybody who's listening to this knows somebody who's had it or has it right now. And if you're in my position, you know lots of people that actively have COVID right now, and some of them that are very sick, and frankly, some people who've passed away. So, you know, this is a real thing. This is a real surge. And, and I need people to take this seriously and proceed as if others, everybody you have come in contact with has it. Wear your mask, wash your hands, keep your distance, avoid large gatherings. It, it's consistent messaging from what we've had. But right now, we're seeing the ramifications of this thing just going on so long that people have grown tired of, of doing some of those things. And, and I really think that if we can give it a push for a couple months here while the vaccines are taking effect, then spring into summer is going to start to feel really different. And that's my hope. So with contact tracing, yes, we continue to do it. At the same time, with the surge being as high as it is, assume that everybody that you come in contact with has COVID and act accordingly.
Thank you, Mr. Leach. Ms. Herndon, is, is that the sum, sum of your two questions?
Yeah, that about sums it up. Thanks so much.
Anybody else from Angels Camp? Okay. With that, I'm going to bring up a couple of things that I would like to talk to Public Health about and the rest of the Board of Supervisors. You know, as you all know, we have a new board member on the board this year. You know, when, when even just one on the Board of Supervisors changed, it changes the continuity of the entire board. We're a different board now. And I would like to, in the interest of my predecessor on the chair spot, I won't be asking for a poll this one time. I'll be asking if anybody would be opposed to us putting together a message as the board in its entirety towards, you know, maintaining, social distancing, public, wearing your masks, and proceeding in, in the interests of keep, you know, health, to keep our community open into the future. I, I, as I know, Ms. Callaway, I will not ask for that many words to be put into it, but, you know, a consistent message from the entire board, and I would like support from the entire board on this type of message going out to the community. Is there anybody opposed to that from the Board of Supervisors? I appreciate the silence. That's a good thing. So with, with that, I, I think I, I may sit down, you know, with Ms. Callaway and, you know, put together this message. It's something we discussed in the past, nothing against you, Ms. Follendorf, but I think, you know, as long as no one's opposed to it, I'll sit down with Ms. Callaway and put together a message that we can send out of Public Health in, in that direction. And we'll, we'll go with that. Is there anything else from any of the Board of Supervisors or Angels Camp as we proceed? Mr. Bolio?
Mr. Stopper, I would support everything you just said right there. So, well done and kudos. That, that's, that's a good message to send out. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bolio. We appreciate it, Mr. Mayor. With that, I'll, I'll let Angels Camp, oh, Ms. Follendorf, my apologies.
No, I have one question for Sam. I wanted to see if we could get some information on the impact to the local EMT and ambulance services. Are they, what, what are they seeing on the ground?
I have, I have heard some stuff. I'm, I'm not sure what I can share and not share, and frankly, Supervisor, Supervisor Follendorf, I'm not sure how much I recall. The, the, the main thing is that the message is, is clear from our fire captains and our first responders that, you know, this threat is real, the surge is out there, and these guys, you know, they're having to respond to a lot of calls, they're having to deal with COVID a lot, and frankly, if people don't take this seriously, you're running the risk of ambulances not being available to get to you. I mean, we've got to work together, we've got to come together as a community, stop arguing about this, and, and do the basic things you need to do to support our business owners and, and support each other by wearing a mask, by distancing, by avoiding large gatherings. These are the things we have to do to get the volume of calls and the, the amount of things that our first responders are reporting to. Because yes, anecdotally, I've heard those stories. I don't have data for you on that, if that's what you were looking for, but I know that it's a pressing issue. I've heard those accounts. Melissa, you're, you're on the call, so maybe you can speak to that, because I know that you were on a call where I was, you know, Mr. Roarbaugh was telling us about it, but I don't remember the specific deals offhand. Maybe you do.
I don't have that specific information as it pertains to countywide. We did have some information that we released to the public as it pertains to a surge that we saw just before Christmas for the City of Angels. I don't remember those numbers, but I believe that our calls were up considerably from the fire chief's perspective, and he wanted to make the community and the public aware. But we can work together and get more information for you, Supervisor Follendorf, because I'm sure City Council will also appreciate that information.
Yeah, thank you, thank you for that, Melissa. Sorry to put you on the spot. I know that it was not a nominal or incremental change. It's been a significant volume increase for them. I just don't have data on it.
Thank you.
One last thing I would like to bring up and just potentially reach my hand out to Angels Camp as we proceed with this possible message. Maybe later on, you can discuss it between you all and see if you want to join us in a joint message, so we stay consistent across the county. You know, we'll be in touch. You know, we got to go through the proper process for putting out this type of message, so this gives us a little time before we address it, but please, please consider joining us and coordinating with us.
That sounds great, Ben. Thank you.
All right. If there's no other questions, I'm going to go ahead and let Angels Camp close out.
Thank you, Board of Supervisors. Have a good afternoon.
Can I, Mayor Bolio, could I request that we get a motion to adjourn?
Yes. Could I get a motion to adjourn, please?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Oh, one other thing, my apologies. I never asked for public comment, so at this point, I would like to, before you adjourn out, my apologies. I would like to give the public the opportunity to comment. We've addressed a lot, so here we go.
Sorry, I guess, Chair Stopper, we do have a public comment.
Good morning. This is Terry McBride, mother, New California State Senator and Committee Chair for Calaveras County. Yeah, I'm looking at these numbers, and I see a total of 922 cases. Isn't that since March? So in over 10 months now, we've only had 922 cases in a county of 45,000. I kind of think that's maybe even less than the flu season. And apparently, we have a cure for the flu, and it's called COVID-19. And what's really interesting is that when I speak to people that have gone through COVID, they basically have the symptoms of the flu. So I have to wonder, because we've got a lot of money involved in this whole thing, and you start following the money, and you've got to start questioning just what in the world is going on, except watching my local business friends, because remember, I'm fifth generation from this county. My local business friends that are trying to figure out how in the world they're going to stay open and survive. And yes, isn't it nice that the government that shut them down is offering them grants? They don't want grants, they want to run their business. They want their Board of Supervisors and their City Council to follow the Constitution. And so I'm going to remind you all that you took an oath of office, and when you did that, you agreed to protect our constitutional rights. And when you violate that, you are in, you're in violation of the Constitution. So it suggests that you look at our Constitution and learn it well, especially the First, the Fourth, the Eighth, and the Fourteenth Amendment. When I look at press releases of the flu, which were really bad, apparently, in 2018 and 2019, I didn't see a word about shutting businesses. I didn't see a word about wearing a mask and walking in abject fear that I see in people's eyes. And yet, when I look at total cases of over 10 months, it's only 922 in a county of 45,000. So I ask that you use common sense while you do this and understand you took an oath of office. I did too, for New California, and I stand by it. And I hope that each one of you will, and really consider the choices you make as you move forward.
Thank you, Ms. McBride. Is there any other public comment available?
Yes, Chair Stopper, we have another comment.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. I want to thank Sam Leach and Doug Archer for what I thought was really an excellent presentation. We got a lot more information. We've all been wondering, and it was really good information. My question is to deal with the fact that we are not talking about providing doses to people, vaccines to people over 75, and to school teachers and staff. And so I'm just wondering, do we know how many people we expect to have to provide to, and where do we stand with the number of doses that we have or expect to have? Thank you. And my name is Robert Polikov.
Thank you, Mr. Polikov. Do you want to take the opportunity to answer that, Mr. Leach?
To an extent, yes. And Mr. Polikov, I appreciate those comments, and they're good questions. As far as the number of doses on hand, that is such a moving target, because we're vaccinating people every day. What I can assure you is we are not sitting on thousands of doses. I've heard some rumors out there, you know, there's a lot of misinformation floating around out there. Some of that's my fault, right? But, you know, we're trying to clear it up today. You know, at any given time, we may have a few hundred doses that, you know, are being strategically, you know, systematically is probably a better word, stored for the proper use. But as of right now, we don't always know what we're getting and when we're getting it from the state until very shortly before they arrive here. So our capacity is only so much, which is why it's really difficult to just come out with kind of a timeline, or even a rough timeline, of, you know, when is my healthy 17-year-old daughter gonna have access to this? You know, questions like that, that are further down the line from frankly, our most vulnerable populations that we're focused on right now, while we have a limited number of doses and a limited capacity to administer those doses. We expect that both of those things, our capacity to administer doses and our actual number of vaccines on hand, are gonna increase very quickly, and at times maybe quicker than we're ready for, and at times slower than we wish it would be. So that's been just the tremendous challenge that our Deputy Public Health Director and her team have been faced with in trying to navigate this storm.
So my, if I'm still there, I guess I am still there. My, the thrust of my question is really, given the number of people over 75 and the number of school teachers and staff, do you think you have adequate doses to hit that entire population, or will have enough doses to hit that entire population?
I believe we will have. You know, we do have enough to get moving, and we do know that we have more coming in. The question is how much, how fast? And when I say that we're working on those, understand that that is not, that's not an overnight thing. We have a pretty healthy population of people over 75 in this county. So, you know, that's gonna take some time, and it's a heavy lift for Mark Twain. Obviously, we've got a lot of school teachers and school employees who need to be vaccinated, so that's a heavy lift for just, I could be wrong, but I've heard we only have about four school nurses throughout the county. That's a heavy lift for them. But it frees us up to continue working at the same time with our other Tier 1A, Tier 1B, moving into Tier 1B populations. So what I think is gonna happen, what I hope happens, is that we're gonna start getting flooded with vaccines from the state. You know, they're gonna start pushing down more and more, and at times, it'll be quicker than we're ready for. I'm sure my Public Health team is cringing right now, but, you know, as fast as they wanna make us run, we're gonna run. But we've gotta do it systematically and orderly and equitably. We can't stray from that. There's a system to this, and we've gotta get our vulnerable populations done first so that we're not putting their lives at stake.
Thank you very much. That's greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Leach. Thank you, Mr. Polikov. Is there any other public comments?
Yes, Chair Stopper, we have an additional one.
Okay, thank you.
Hi, my name is Norm Rector. My big concern is how are you going to notify the residents of this county as to when it's appropriate for them to call to get an appointment? I've heard the comments that we will notify you, but I've never heard of the answer is how? Because this is the first I've heard of any of this information. It's certainly not on a public health website, so I appreciate your answer to that.
Yeah, I agree, Mr. Rector. We've been working really hard to get some of this information updated. It's been changing daily, even last night, working on it, working on it more today, and over the next few days, to get more clarity for you. It was a little bit muffled, so I apologize. Somebody stopped me. I believe your question was about address verification and whether they're residents of this county, but it muffled out a little bit for me.
No, my question is, what method are you gonna use to communicate with this information? Is it telephone? Is it email? Is it internet? What is it?
I apologize for not answering your question. Colleen, I see that you wanna chime in here.
Hi, yeah, thank you, Sam. So Public Health will be utilizing all of the various communication strategies that we have. So we'll be utilizing our website, we'll be utilizing social media, but we'll also be utilizing some of the more traditional methods as well. We are going to be putting up flyers, we're going to be putting things in the newspaper, it will be in our press releases. So we'll be, once we get past the initial groups that we're trying to work with, we will be advertising it far and wide to ensure that everybody in Calaveras knows when their time to get vaccinated is here.
Can I suggest two other methods to get the communication out? PG&E does really well about talking about BSBS stuff, and they have the email addresses of everybody in the county. CCWD delivers water to everybody, every house, they have information as well, so you might wanna think about using their services to help you with that communication.
Thank you, Mr. Rector. We appreciate the input. Is there any other public comments moving forward?
Chair Stopper, I do not see any at this time.
Is there any for Angels Camp?
Ben, this is Alvin. I think Gretel had her hand up a minute ago, and we missed her. I don't know if she wanted to comment, or bumped it, or what. She's shaking her hand.
She's on mute, and she says no, so. She's been dancing around in front of the screen the whole time, so.
Look, somebody has to make food here.
Okay, so I'll let you proceed with closing out. Angels Camp, my apologies for the interruption.
No problem, Ben. Thank you. I would look at motion to adjourn.
We need a motion, Alvin?
Yes, a motion to adjourn.
Motion to adjourn the meeting, please.
Okay.
I'll second.
So I got Jen for first, Isabel for second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anybody at the photo, same sign?
Hey, yo, good morning. Good morning.
We are adjourned. Thank you very much, Board of Supervisors.
Thank you very much, Angels Camp. We're gonna, thank you, everyone. We're gonna go ahead and proceed to general public comment. Any item of interest to the public that is within the subject matter jurisdiction of the board and is not posted on the consent of regular agendas may be addressed during the public comment period. California law prohibits the board from taking action on any matter which is not posted on the agenda unless it is determined to be an emergency by the Board of Supervisors. If public comment is completed before the 30 minutes allotted time period, the board may immediately move to the next order of business. If public comment is not completed during the allotted time period, it will be continued as the last item of business in order to provide an opportunity for the remainder of comments to be heard. With that, I'm gonna hand it over to our Board Clerk and ask if we have any public comment.
Chair Stopper, yes, we do. My video feed just went away, so I can't see who it is, but I do know we have our hand raised.
Okay, I can't see it from here, so.
It's all right, Ben. It's Terry McBride, Calaveras County Committee Chair and Senator of New California State. I am reading the State of New California, Agreement 38. Once again, we grieve the fact that California violates the U.S. Constitution, Article 4, Section 4, Article 5, pardon me, Article 6, the First Amendment and the Fourteenth Amendment. Order of the day, investigate domestic terrorism. Everyone agrees there is a need to investigate domestic violence. California State has announced that they would soon be introducing a bill to have the state create special investigation units focusing on domestic terrorism. The as-of-yet-unnumbered bill written in response to the quote-unquote "storming of the United States Capitol Building" in Washington, D.C. last week would specifically have the Attorney General and the Office of Emergency Services be in charge of creating such teams. Within the California Department of Justice, teams would specifically investigate coordinated efforts to stop any incidences of domestic terror, hate crimes, and other criminal endeavors done by, according to the press release, white nationalists, neo-Nazi, neo-confederate, anti-government militia, and other similar groups. The Cal OES State Threat Assessment Group would assess threats from the same groups. A special note is the California State Legislature left off the biggest domestic terrorist leading the nation's communist insurrection, its very own craven dictator governor. The California governor is by far the biggest domestic terrorist in the nation's history as he wields unbridled power that the very same legislature who wants to investigate United States citizens living in California gave him one year ago. Since March 4, 2020, the California governor has been an official dictator. Definition of a dictator by Oxford Dictionary, a ruler with total power over a country, typically one who has obtained control by force. The legislature in California State is non-existent but cannot resist their totalitarian impulses as they have eagerly allowed the governor has suipt their power under the guise of the COVID virus. Of course, with a mono-party system that fails to provide a republican form of government, the unilateral giving up of legislative power to the dictator has been easy totalitarian impulse to follow. While there is no known opposition to the soon-to-be bill, some have called for the inclusion of left-wing groups such as those that rioted in American cities during the summer of 2020 to be included as well. You need to look at everyone who has or is planning acts like that, explained in anonymous law enforcement advisor. If you look at those that broke into the Capitol and were in the Million MAGA march, then you need to look at the groups and individuals who were burning police stations in Portland and assaulting others too. We need to un-polarize right now and base it all on law and order.
Ms. McBride, I'm sorry, that is time.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. McBride. Is there any other public comments?
Ms. Glanville, can you tell me if there's any more comments?
I don't see any other hands raised up on my screen. I pulled up participants.
Then Chair Stopper, no other comment, public comments?
Thank you. With that, we will be moving on to the consent agenda next, but I would like to take a 10-minute break, if everyone's okay with that? Okay, thank you. Yeah, as long, I see all the board members. Everyone give me thumbs up? We're good? All right. Let's go ahead. Let me know when we're live.
We are live.
Thank you. Next, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Consent agenda items are expected to be routine and non-controversial. They will be acted upon by the board at one time without discussion. Any board member, staff member, or interested party may request removal of an item from the consent agenda for later discussion. So with that, I would like to give, let's, any county staff that would like to pull any items? Ms. Edwards?
I believe Supervisor Follendorf is going to pull.
Okay, okay. I'll leave that. Any board members that would like to pull any items?
I would like to pull Item 3, 4, and 5, which are the minutes from three previous board meetings that I was not in attendance.
Right, right.
And then, may I make a motion to approve Consent Item 22?
Thank you, Amanda. We're gonna give everyone else the opportunity to possibly pull some other items and see if any members of the public also, and then we'll move on to those. Is there any other items that any of the rest of the board would like to pull from the consent agenda? Staff, any staff would like to pull any items from the consent agenda? Any public that would like to pull any items from the consent agenda? Okay, with that, I'll take a motion now, Ms. Follendorf, for the remainder of the consent You're on mute.
Move to approve Consent Agenda Items 6 through 22.
Thank you, Ms. Follendorf. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
I'll second. Marita just got in before you, Mr. Toffenelli, again. We'll give this one to Ms. Callaway for a second. I'll do roll call. All those in favor, let's go. District 1?
Aye.
District 2?
District 2, aye.
District 3?
Aye.
District 4?
Aye.
And District 5 is an aye. So that's passes 5-0. Let's move on to, I think we can group Items 3, 4, and 5 together unless there's any discussion about these. Is there any board members that would like to have any discussions about Items 3, 4, and 5? Okay, I would say that. Is there any public comment for Items 3, 4, and 5?
Chair Stopper, there doesn't seem to be.
With that, I'll go through, I'll take a motion to approve Items 3, 4, and 5. I'll move those items. I see Gary Toffenelli for move on it, and I see Jaco Mindy for a second. We'll go roll call. District 1? Yes. District 2?
District 2, aye.
3?
Yes.
4?
Abstain.
Abstain, very good. And 5 is a yes. That passes 4-0 and 1 abstention. With that, that concludes the consent agenda. We'll move on to the regular agenda at this time. Does planning need any time to prepare for Item 23? Are you ready?
This is Peter Mauer. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Okay, we just need to be changed from our setting to be participants in the meeting to shared screen.
Okay.
So as soon as the board clerk.
Board Clerk, can you please facilitate this for us?
For myself and for Gina.
Yes.
Okay, we just need to be changed from our setting to, to be participants in the meeting to share a screen.
Okay.
So as soon as the Board Clerk.
Ms. Board Clerk, can you please facilitate this for us?
For myself and for Gina.
Yes.
I'm going to go ahead and read off Item 23 while they're doing this. Planning, planning, conduct a public hearing and adopt a resolution approving 2019-052 General Plan Amendment from Residential Low Density to Rural Residential for Sierra Parkway properties. Ms. Edwards, I would ask you for the proper process once, as I move forward on these public hearings. Just give me the proper wording so I don't stumble on myself right now.
Sure, just a moment. So, uh, so for a public hearing, any person who wishes to, so you'll open the public hearing as soon as Planning gets all set up and is ready to go. Staff can make their presentation. If there are, is anyone else who wishes to be heard, whether from members of the public, the applicant, et cetera, they can also be heard. Once, and then you'll, once everyone who wishes to speak has done so, you close the public hearing, and then the board can obviously deliberate and then vote.
Very good. So at this point, I will open the public hearing. I assume Mr. Mauer and Ms. Caffin are ready?
Yes, if you, if it's appropriate, these three items, 23, 24, and 25, are all associated with the same project. It's a general plan amendment, zoning amendment, and tentative map. We would like to be able to make one presentation on all three items. So it'd be appropriate to open all three items, open the public hearing on those. And then at the end of the hearing process, there are three separate actions that need to be taken: a proposed resolution for the general plan amendment, an ordinance for the zoning amendment, and then another resolution for the tentative map itself. So if you could open up all three items, we'll make one presentation on all three. Then I'll turn it over to Gina after that.
Very good, Mr. Mauer. I think Ms. Edwards is in agreement. So I will open the public hearing for all three items as suggested by Mr. Mauer, 23, 24, and 25. And we'll move from there.
Go ahead, Gina.
Okay, so, good morning, everyone. We'll just quickly run through a little PowerPoint presentation to keep us on track. But as Peter just indicated, we've got one project consisting of three separate actions: a general plan amendment, zoning amendment, and a subdivision map, all four Sierra properties. So let me go ahead and get things moving here. Can everyone see, okay, the PowerPoint?
I don't see it yet.
No?
I'm going to go.
Let's see. Share screen. There we go.
Very good. It's coming up now.
Our business, okay. I have to learn how to use this properly. Okay, here we go. So what we have here is a property located one mile southeast of State Highway 4 in old highway intersection at Camp Connell, located in the Big Trees subdivision, addressed at 2542 Shoshone Drive, again, in Camp Connell. The intent of this project is to divide 15.29 acres of land into six parcels ranging in size from 1.01 acres to 3.86 acres in size. In order to divide the property, the applicant also applied for a general plan amendment to amend the current land use designation of residential low-density to rural residential, which will result also in a zoning amendment from the current R1 Single Family Residential Zone District to Rural Residential RR. So the current residential low-density land use designation is a single-family residential designation that recognizes parcels that are being served by public water and public, and this is the reason why we have to, the applicant had to apply for a general plan amendment because the single-family residential development within this subdivision is not served by public sewer. In fact, they are all served by onsite wastewater systems. So proposed is the rural residential land use designation, which recognizes rural residential uses without public sewer. So just kind of a quick lowdown, a comparison between the two land use designations. You'll notice that the minimum lot size requirement in the residential low-density designation is 7,000 square feet, where the rural residential designation has a minimum of one acre. Again, as previously stated, the residential low-density designation requires development, new development to be served by both public water and public sewer, where, again, the rural residential designation acknowledges parcels that have public water but that do not have public sewer that are only served by onsite wastewater systems. R1 Single Family Residential is the only residential zone district that is permitted or found consistent in the residential low-density designation. So amending the general plan means we need to also amend the zoning, which will be RR, which is the only consistent zone in the rural residential designation. So just a quick lowdown, a comparison between the two zones. They are very similar. We will, we both recognize R1 and RR as primary land uses residential, allowing one single-family residence per legal parcel along with an accessory dwelling unit not to exceed 1,200 square feet. Both the R1 and the RR zones allow personal-size agricultural operations. There are some additional uses in the RR zone that are not included as permitted in the R1 zone, but those are excluded in this scenario because there is a requirement for the use to only commence on parcels of 20 acres or larger in size. Those uses would be like a small winery, a tasting room, as well as some agritourism activities. And again, being that these parcels are actually less than four acres in size, they would not have the ability to commence any of those permitted uses in the RR zone. Site development standards for both zones are the same. The minimum parcel size for new parcels and density is the same between RR and R1. R1, in addition to RR, actually allows for varying parcel sizes depending on the availability of water and sewer. So just to give you a little background, some of you may recall, these parcels are actually part of the Big Trees Village subdivision. They were originally zoned recreation with the intent that these would be accepted for public use. They were not accepted for public use and never transferred to the Homeowners Association. With that, the Ebbets Pass Fire District acquired the property with the intent of building a fire station. Later, recognizing that it was not a suitable site for a fire station in 1998, the general plan changed to community development lands, and the parcel was zoned from recreation to R1 Single Family Residential. Subsequent to that, the Ebbets Pass Fire District sold the property. So being acquired by the Novigradic back in 2004, there was a 15-lot subdivision that was approved. That was served by district water and onsite wastewater systems. That map was never recorded, and it eventually expired. Later on, in 2012, another subdivision map was approved for Novigradic. It, too, was a 15-lot subdivision served by district water, but three of those 15 lots were devoted to a community wastewater system. That map actually was approved and received two extensions of time. Recently, probably within the last couple of years, the applicant, property owner, just recognized that that previously-approved 15-lot subdivision was just not a viable project. So with that, they revised the application, which is what we're considering today. Since this process has commenced, that map, that previously-approved map, actually expired. So the redesigned project is basically reduced to six lots. Obviously, that increases the individual parcel sizes. The parcels are on individual wastewater systems, which eliminates the community wastewater system that was previously approved in the Novigradic 15-lot subdivision. All the parcels will be served by private driveways, thus eliminating the interior road system and the cul-de-sac that was previously approved with the 15-lot Novigradic subdivision as well. The lots are still served by district water. That provider is CCWD. We do have concept approval, which basically verifies the capacity to serve the project, and that will be, the concept approval is good through the year 2022. The Ebbets Pass Fire District has the local regulatory authority over these unimproved lots and other unimproved lots in this area of the county. They do require fire hydrants in residential every 600 feet. This project kind of fell short, so we are requiring, or I should say, the Ebbets Pass Fire District is requiring the installation of a new fire hydrant on Sierra Parkway, and we have conditioned the project accordingly. CAL FIRE is the state responsibility to enforce fire protection and enforce public resource codes. This property is defined as timberland because of its commercial timber species. We did receive comment from CAL FIRE indicating that the removal of any commercial species, timber species, require a CAL FIRE permit. Other than a notice of potential permit needed for tree removal, CAL FIRE did not give us any specific project-related comments other than the removal of trees and the possibility of needing a permit. So there was a biological assessment and a spotted owl survey conducted on the property. Numerous regulated species within three miles of the subject property were noted in that report. And although the biologist did not see any visual signs of any of the regulated species, he did find that there was suitable habitat. So in order to reduce impacts to biological resources, we placed a mitigation on the negative declaration to require pre-disturbance surveys for the protection of roosting bats and nesting birds. We did receive a letter from CCIRK. For those of you who don't know, that is the Central Sierra Environmental Resource Center. They did have concerns regarding wildlife movement through the parcel being that it was previously open-spaced and meant for public use. We, recognizing the general plan policies for the preservation and enhancement of upland habitat, initially, we did place a condition on the map to require wildlife-friendly fencing. However, the Planning Commission discussion, during the Planning Commission discussion, the commission chose to omit and strike that condition from the resolution, stating that because the subdivision CCNRs currently prohibit fencing, we could create some confusion with a further restriction on the type of fencing that might be allowed on these particular parcels. In addition, they found that there was no obstruction, that wildlife can move freely throughout the subdivision, utilizing various open parcels as well as roads to traverse from the, to traverse from the timberland open space to the, to the east and through the subdivision. So they didn't find that the wildlife-friendly fencing was necessary. In addition, it doesn't hold small livestock or pets. So if, in fact, the CCNRs were to ever change and somehow change the restriction to prohibit fencing, a notice of restriction would be very onerous for the property owners to go back and change, and did not find that it was necessary for us to regulate it to that point. So our SEQA analysis covered impacts associated with the tentative subdivision track map only at the time. We did make a, with mitigation, we did find less-than-significant impacts to biological resources. That was the only mitigation that we had to make, and we just previously spoke about those pre-disturbance surveys. During the circulation of the environmental document, I did receive two phone calls from adjacent property owners. One was relative to the construction time of interior road system, not realizing that the new project that we're considering today eliminated the construction of the interior road system in the cul-de-sacs. She was mainly concerned with, with the disturbance from heavy equipment, dust, et cetera. Once she realized that there was not going to be an interior road system in cul-de-sac with this project and that they were individual driveways, she was satisfied and had no further concerns. The other questions were concerning the, the previously-approved community wastewater system. And once I explained that these parcels will be served by onsite wastewater systems, individual systems, and not the community system that was previously approved, this adjacent property owner, too, was satisfied and had no other concerns. So subsequent to the circulation of the SEQA document, we did have, we did receive the general plan amendment and zoning amendment applications. We did circulate those applications to everyone that was previously notified of both the application for subdivision as well as the SEQA notice. And we received no further comments, concerns. Being that there are no physical changes as a result of the general plan and the zoning amendment, really, the impacts associated with the project are those impacts that would be imposed by the subdivision map, and we didn't find that there were any additional or over and beyond relative to the general plan and zoning amendment. So we felt that there was no need to recirculate that SEQA document, and our finding was a mitigated negative declaration. So in conclusion, we feel that we have addressed all comments and concerns, all agency comments and concerns. Project is conditioned to meet applicable requirements of the municipal code. We find it's consistent with the general plan, Title 16, as well as Title 17 zoning. The proposed lots meet the minimum requirements in the RR zone, and there's no substantial evidence of significant effect on the environment. Your Planning Commission has already heard this item, and their recommendation to you is to approve the project, including the general plan amendment, the zoning amendment, as well as the subdivision map. That concludes my presentation. If you have any questions?
Thank you, Ms. Caffin. Marita, this is in your district. I'll give you the opportunity to comment first, and then we'll move on to public comment and work it from there. and work it from there.
I've been involved with this since it first started years ago, and Ms. Caffin did a really good job of explaining it. I will be making a modification on one of the items when it comes time to vote.
Thank you. At this time, is there any other board members that would like to make any comments right now? Shall we give the property owners the opportunity to comment if they are present?
I do have public raising their hands at this time.
Okay, we'll take public comment.
I know Zach Goldenberg, sorry, the name, where did he go? Zach, go ahead and start. I will move on to another speaker at this moment. I have Rich James. Mr. James?
Yes, can everyone hear me okay?
Yes.
Hi, my name's Rich James. I'm the project surveyor for this project, and I'm just here to kind of hopefully answer any questions that the supervisors or members of the public may have pertaining to this
Thank you, Mr. James. We'll go ahead and let any public comment finish up prior to moving on, and then, Mr. James, if you could hold on, maybe there can be some questions answered if needed during
That sounds good.
Ms. McMillan?
Hi, thank you, thank you for taking my comment, and I really appreciate all the consideration that has gone into this. Can people hear me?
Yes.
Okay, great, thanks. I'm also, I'm the neighbor of Zach, and we were texting earlier. He may be helping his children now with homeschooling, so hopefully he'll be able to return and make his comment if there's time. So I, as one of the new neighbors that's kitty-cornered to one of the proposed parcels, as new neighbors, we're really late to this process, so I'm sorry that we didn't become, get more informed earlier. I guess I just, I'm, have some lack of clarity in regard to what may be going on with the onsite sewage. I realize there's a lot of onsite sewage in this neighborhood, so I'm not so concerned, but it's just, I'm not very clear on it. But mostly, I just kind of request that, you know, it is a fence-free area, as already mentioned, and just would love to have the preservation of as many trees as possible to keep as much, as much preservation of nature as possible in the consideration moving forward. And then finally, I know one of the board members mentioned that she would make a modification. I don't know if it's appropriate to ask now, but I'm just curious if that modification would be like substantial in nature, or something that could be discussed earlier, or if it's, if that's not appropriate. Those are all my questions.
Yeah, we can talk about that. So first of all, relative to onsite septic systems, in previously, in the, in the previous approved map, there were three lots that were devoted to what they considered to be a community system, and that has been eliminated. And the onsite wastewater systems are the same as they are everywhere else in the subdivision in that an individual system will be installed to handle the wastewater needs of each residence as they're built. And regarding preservation of trees, they have gone through with an exemption permit, I believe, and removed some of the trees, but those were beetle trees, you know, trees that needed to be removed. Now, with this project opposed to the last project, I think you'll probably find that there is going to be fewer trees removed because we're not, they're not required to put in the road system that they were previously required to do. So the reduction of this, I think you're going to find more, more trees left, less of an impact in that respect. And the change that Marita was talking about was, it was an oversight on my part. When putting together the resolution for the subdivision, the tentative subdivision map resolution, should have also included the language in the title, the language to approve or adopt the mitigated negative declaration. So we included the findings in all three, both, all both resolutions and the ordinance. The language is all there. It was in the recommendation, but it was my oversight in, in putting together the electronic packet itself, and I just overlooked the, the language that needed to be in the title of the resolution. And unless there's something else, Marita, okay, that was, that was all that we had discovered.
Okay, got it. Thanks, thanks so much, Gina.
You're welcome.
And that, that all sounds great to me. Just one final follow-up is sadly, we are also facing a lot of like cedar borer issues. We're having to remove a lot of trees and doing our best to treat the ones that are still viable. And I could just imagine in a project like this, with what seems to be an infestation in our area, the removal of both healthy trees for the development, as required for the development, as well as the cedar borer trees, could result in a loss of a lot of trees. And I, I don't know what's possible, but if there could be some sort of request that as many of the healthy trees are preserved, taking into account that a lot of unhealthy trees will need to be removed, that would be fantastic.
Thank you, Ms. McMillan.
Thank you.
I see here that Mr. Goldenberg said he was muted and is able to talk now. Are we able to unmute Mr. Goldenberg and get him up for public comment?
Yes, Chair Stoffer.
Thank you, everyone. Can you hear me?
Yes, sir.
Wonderful. So I've been a property owner and am adjacent to this development since 1979 and seen all the different reiterations. The great concern for me is kind of, you know, the fire risk to the entire Big Trees Village up here. They've done a really, really poor job over the past 15 years keeping this property clean. And finally, in the last couple of weeks, when development was moving forward, they started cleaning up all the fallen dead trees. The fire hydrant issue of putting them on Sierra Parkway doesn't resolve more residents being put in from a fire hazard standpoint, and that these driveways are going to have to be significantly longer than 600 feet to get to the 15-acre spread of six developed properties. So we're eliminating the road system, which is actually increasing the fire hazards here because getting the fire department in to protect these homes if there is an issue, which my property backs right up to, is not going to be as the development actually puts out there. So that's one great concern. And the other is just the environmental impact. The wildlife that comes through this greenbelt is significant, and in the past six months, you know, I looked at the report, it's really about the different birds and the nesting. It's not about the actual four-legged animals that are very prevalent here. And so we've had bears, we've had coyotes, mountain lions, and foxes pretty much on a weekly basis, and that's going to go away. Maybe that's a good thing? I don't know. I don't feel it is, but just wanted to voice my opinions. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there any other public comments?
Chair Stoffer, it seems we have one more.
Thank you.
My name is Mark Donley. I'm Bob Polikov's wife, and the question I have regards to traffic. I don't know if any of you have noticed the increase in traffic since now the, the neighborhood has opened up to flatlanders who are now moving up here because they can work up here. Traffic has been really, really difficult. Number one, has anyone looked at the traffic impact? And number two, has anyone looked at the impact on, on emergency services, are emergency services able to access these properties? And that's my question.
Yeah, so the answer is yes. All of those, everything was evaluated and analyzed in the environmental document that is along with this packet. Numerous times, the applications, as well as the environmental document, were circulated to your local fire district, as well as CalFire, and none of the, neither one of those agencies had any direct concerns or, or direct responses relative to, to meeting those needs to access the parcels via a driveway system. As a matter of fact, we had forwarded the driveway, actual map to the fire district, and they didn't have any concerns about it at all. So there doesn't appear to be any concern with them being able to respond in the need of a fire or other 911 calls. And traffic generation, we found less than significant with the addition. We have to remember that although we say six lots, there are basically, there's already three legal parcels, so we are basically taking three legal parcels and dividing them then in half. So there's just, it, it sounds like a lot six, but when you start with three legal parcels and you break it down, it's really not that much of an impact associated with additional traffic.
Okay, I understand that. Has anyone considered, I hate to say this, stoplights? I mean, it is almost impossible to get on Route 4, except, you know, maybe on a Tuesday morning.
Caltrans was, was, was provided the application as well as the environmental document, and they came back twice with no concerns, no comments.
Is that recent? Because what we're seeing right now is a very recent influx of new neighbors, a recent influx.
That's general, that's a different area.
Yeah, so during the timeframe of this process, they were notified, and they had an opportunity to request anything, whether they felt it was a traffic study that was needed, that may result in some sort of off-site improvements. They, they did not feel that this project warranted the need for any other improvements or any further analysis of traffic impacts.
What year was this done?
This, 2020.
That's two years ago.
No, 2020.
No, 20, last year.
Okay.
They, they got notice of, of the initial application for subdivision, they got notice of the general plan amendment and zoning amendment application, they got notice of the environmental document, as well as notice of both public hearings. So they've been notified upwards of five times.
Okay, you've answered my question. I appreciate that.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Polikov. Are there any other public comments?
I just have Mr. Kemmer that is on here.
I think I'm unmuted now. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Thanks for, for taking my question or comment. First, just a thank you to Gina over the weekend for responding to my emails. I know that's not necessarily part of her job, but she did it, so thank you. And I'm, I'm at 2598, I'm a property owner. I joined one of, I guess, two of the lot, of the new lots that are being proposed. I'm also on the board of the HOA up here. I, I guess it was Zach who, Zach Goldenberg, who, who mentioned the fire hydrant and just how to combat a fire if it was to happen on one of these interior kind of long drivewayed properties. I don't know if there's anything, and maybe this isn't the appropriate time to ask the question, but I just don't know. Certainly, from a fire hydrant at the street, that would be very, very challenging for firefighters, and I don't know if their approval of this and, and lack of concern is due to maybe requirements around building for having something onsite closer to the homes if and when they are built. Does anyone know that?
There are building requirements for such things as water storage, but I'm not sure if that actually applies to these particular parcels. But there are, there are lots of regulations through the building permit process that will have to be, you know, adhered to.
Yep. I, I know that, you know, as a, as a board member over the past several years up here, we're obviously, as homeowners, we're concerned about the fire danger, and certainly as board members we are as well. We've done a, a huge amount of work up here to kind of get ourselves, you know, and continue to be a firewise community, but there's been a lot of work to, to kind of mitigate, to the extent that we can, the fire danger, and we're just, you know, very concerned about it. I just wanted to voice that.
Absolutely.
Thank you, sir. Does that sum up our public comment?
I have Mr. James with his hand raised again, so we'll check with him.
We, we, we will only give one round of comment during, during these. Looks like you took his hand down now.
Thank you.
Mr. James is the applicant agent.
Thank you. Ms. Bonsoye, did you want to ask a question?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, I'm, I'm also a property owner off of Shoshone. We were just wondering, like, is that map going to stay the same in those weird irregular shapes? Or is it going to be like, for the property, I know a lot of the property owners on Shoshone, we would love to just keep it the same. Like, so if we have the opportunity to collaborate and buy those together or buy them separately, like, we would like to keep those lots natural as possible and not have them build anything on there. So that would be great for us to be able to have the opportunity to do that first. Do you know if that map is going to change, or is it going to just stay the same in those weird irregular formations? Because like, if we want to have a neighbor next to us, we want to buy that straight up behind us, it's in a weird shape. It's not in like a fashion where like, if you're a neighbor, like, you're going to have to have a couple of neighbors either going with you, or you're just going to have to buy it, and it's going to get along back of their whole property.
Yeah, so, so the map, the vesting tentative parcel map that you see is the map that the board is considering, and so certainly within substantial conformance, slight variations to the map might be, might be found acceptable during recording time, but generally speaking, it will be this map that is approved. And if approved, it'll be this map that is recorded.
Thank you, Jennifer. We'll move on if there, are there any other public comment?
There are no other public comment at this time.
Okay, with, with that, I think the proper process is to close, close the open meeting at this time, and we will go forward to item, my apologies here, I, item 23, and we will deliberate at this time on item 23.
I would like to just sort of make a generic comment since all three of these are the same project.
Yes, ma'am.
As Mr. Goldenberg said, I too have been involved in many iterations of this project. And having met with the Homeowners Association many years ago and determining configuration, where the entrance would be and so forth. where the entrance would be and so forth, the fact that this is a total reduction in the number of parcels, the parcels will be larger. And like all of us here in the Ebbets Pass corridor, we're required to follow Cal Fire codes on 4290, on keeping our parcels clean. I think it's in the best interest to have a reduced number of parcels. I know the driveway standards for, again, mostly in the Ebbets Pass corridor, has changed significantly. And whoever buys to build parcels will have to follow those driveway standards so there will be public safety access. I support these projects. This project in that I think it has a reduced impact on the community. And if, as Ms. Catherine said, there could be some minor changes to boundary lines when it is recorded. And of course, adjacent property owners, I guess, would have the option if they choose to purchase a parcel. So I would like to move on item 23, approving the general plan amendment from residential low density to rural residential for Sierra Parkway properties.
Thank you, Ms. Callaway. I just want to make it clear that I have closed the hearing on those three items. And I appreciate you doing that. I'm going to give any other board members opportunity to deliberate, and then we'll move forward with the motion, Ms. Callaway. Is there any other board... I'm sorry. Go ahead, Gary.
I have a couple questions. Gina, has there been... I'm not real familiar with the subdivision, and I'm not sure of all the other lots, what's going on with them. You said it was public sewer. Has any perk test been done on these lots at all?
Not to my knowledge. At least it wasn't a requirement of this application.
So...
Okay, so we don't know.
You mentioned that they were on public sewers. All of the other parcels are on private septic systems, on onsite wastewater disposal systems, and most of those are much smaller parcels. So generally, this area is one of the best for, as far as perk rates. And so they will need to do a perk test prior to any construction on the parcels. But based on the parcel size and soil types in this area, the onsite wastewater division of environmental management didn't feel that perk tests were necessary at this time.
Okay, that's the only question I have is were we creating lots that weren't going to be buildable because of perks? But if it's a good area, then that's fine with me.
Thank you, Gary. Are there any other comments from the board? Okay, not hearing any other comments from the board. I would also, thank you for bringing up the perk rates, Gary. A lot of times, people will subdivide an area, and then when the time comes for a buildable lot and they do their perk rates, we find out later on that some of those lots aren't buildable, even though they had already divided them. So good question, and thank you for bringing it up. With that, I will go ahead. Are we able to take all these three items together on a vote? Ms. Edwards?
You could if there was a motion for all three. I believe that Supervisor Callaway made a motion on number 23 at this point.
Okay. Go ahead, Ms. Callaway.
I read number 23. I can take 24 and then my modification to 25. On 24, it'll be an ordinance approving the zoning amendment of three parcels from single-family residential to rural residential and authorize the county to publish property descriptions and map of the property. Excuse me. On item 25, a resolution approving 2019-052 tentative subdivision tract map to divide 15.2 acres into six residential parcels and adopt a mitigated negative declaration for Sierra Parkway properties. I'd like to move on. All three with number 25 as amended.
Thank you, Ms. Callaway. Do we have a second per stated as Supervisor Callaway has said?
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Toffenelli. A second from Mr. Toffenelli. I'm going to go ahead and do roll call. District 1. Yes. District 2.
District 2, I.
District 3.
Yes.
District 4.
Yes.
And District 5 is a yes. Thank you all. So that concludes items 23, 24, and 25. I would like at this time, if they're prepared for planning to present or make a presentation on the zoning ordinance update.
Yes, we just need to bring in our consultant, Martha Miller. I think she's on as an observer right now. We just need to bring her in as a participant.
Is our board clerk on it?
Yes, she should be being moved over right now.
Thank you very much.
I apologize for the delay. There we go, we are ready.
Thank you very much.
All right.
Is there any on the item?
I'm sorry, did you say, were you calling for me?
Yes, have you, have you opened this item up already? Or should we check it?
Oh, yeah. My apologies, I was waiting for the transfer over and I lost my place. At this time, we would... I'm having a little trouble, my computer on this agenda. But I'm getting down to it right now. Right now, I would like to open the meeting to receive a presentation on the zoning ordinance update.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board, Peter Mauer, Planning Director. As we've discussed previously, we are in the process of updating the county zoning ordinance, the comprehensive rewrite of the code. It's been a patchwork of amendments dating back for several decades. And we hired our consultant, Miller Planning Associates, earlier or later last year. And just would like to introduce Martha Miller to you and turn it over to her to make a presentation on where we're at so far in this process and how we'll be moving forward over the next year and a half or so. With that, Martha, take it away.
Great, thanks. And I'm going to share my screen. Go through presentation. Does my presentation up for everyone?
Yes, ma'am.
Great. So thank you very much, Chair Stoppa and members of the board. I'm Martha Miller with Miller Planning Associates, the lead consultant on the project and working very closely with Peter, Gina, and the rest of the staff on this update. I have a short presentation today where I'll give introduction to the project, a brief introduction to zoning, summarize our kind of initial findings and assessment, what we see in your code so far, which was presented in the code analysis memo and given overview of that, but then leave time for discussion so to hear from you, from your perspective, what your thoughts are for the code update and what we should pay attention to in moving forward. So it is a comprehensive update to your zoning code, which is title 17 of the municipal code. Overall, to be more user-friendly and implement your general plan. And as Peter said, your current code is quite old. And while it's been amended over time, it hasn't been comprehensively updated. So kind of as a result, there's a lot of things in there that kind of need cleanup. There's some consistency that's been lost. There's some redundancy in there. And just overall, there's a lot of improvements that could be made to make it more user-friendly. And also, you updated your general plan in November of 2019. And the zoning is one of the tools to help implement your general plan. And by law, it's required to be consistent with your general plan. So this comprehensive update is really kind of pretty timely. Overall, the objectives are to update the zoning code again to implement the general plan and overall be more user-friendly, eliminating some inconsistencies, providing some clarity, creating a transparent and more predictable, consistent process, respond to community concerns, address some of the policies and initiatives in the general plan about promoting infill, mixed use, and development within community areas, overall standardizing the development review process, and of course, being consistent with the applicable state and federal laws that zoning operates within and under. So we're at the beginning of the process where we're doing our initial research, reconnaissance, assessment of the current code, your general plan, the type of development you see on the ground. We've talked to staff. We've talked to some of your code users. We've made our observations. We kind of summarized that and put that into the code analysis memo, which you have before you, and that will summarize. From here, what we'll do is move into the actual drafting of the regulations. And we start with preliminary drafts, and we work with staff on developing those. And then those, as they're drafted, will be available on the county's website for review. We'll also reach out to other departments for review or reach out to others that have a particular knowledge or interest in a certain aspect or interface with that section of the code. We'll do some kind of focused review on those. Once we get some input and feedback on the preliminary draft, we make revisions, and then we'll package it all together into a complete draft zoning code. And kind of go through that same process where we look at it, have it available for review, ask people to review it, get some input, and then we'll make revisions again. And after that, then we'll take it through a formal review and adoption process. So there's opportunities to comment and provide input throughout the process. It is an iterative process, so there isn't really... Until we get to adoption, there really isn't a cutoff date. But we do, at the same time, like to hear about things as early in the process as possible so that we can, we're aware and we can wrap it in. So what is zoning? When we talk about zoning, overall, it's the body of regulations that establish what can be built on a property, how a property can be used, and what type of review process is required. I kind of think of zoning as being a good neighbor. It's really, the intent is to minimize the adverse effects that the buildings or the use of one property might have on another, but also to encourage the optimal land use patterns and encourage development and use in a way that's consistent with the vision for that community. And that's really expressed in your general plan. So zoning identifies the types of uses that are permitted, which uses are subject to certain standards, which uses are not allowed. It establishes development standards and design standards so that the form of that building, the height, the setbacks, the location of the property really are in keeping with that character that the community is interested in. There's performance standards for land use compatibility. And then overall, zoning can be predictable. By having clear regulations, clear processes, there's an assurance of potential development, which is important not only for a property owner or an investor to know how a property can be used, but also for the community and any neighbors to know what they might expect in their community or in their neighborhood. So when we go through these efforts, zoning is often called upon to do some things that it either doesn't do very well or that it in fact doesn't do. And so we'd like to point those out as well early in the process. So while zoning can have development standards within it, it really can't dictate architectural design. So we can look at the building envelope, the form of development, but not dictate a certain architectural style through that. And zoning also cannot regulate the free market. So it doesn't, while it identifies the types of uses that are allowed, it can't determine the exact mix of tenants in a certain development. It also can't create a market for development that doesn't already exist. There's a lot of factors that go into it, but zoning does not create a market for development. And zoning also does not establish land use policy. It's really an implementation tool. And we'll talk a lot about it being consistent with the general plan. Because the general plan, the county's kind of most influential visioning document, land use policy document that the zoning follows up. And when we update the zoning code and the zoning ordinance, we like to think about the users of the code because there's a lot of different users and they have different perspectives. And so we try to keep all of that in mind. And this is an oversimplification of the different users and the interests within it. But I think it just helps kind of give some context. Applicants are looking for, what are the rules that need to be followed for development? What's allowed? What's the timeframe for decision-making? Is there any flexibility involved? How are neighbors' concerns considered throughout the process? Design professionals also interested in clear rules, but maybe a little bit more about the flexibility if there's a certain design solution that they have or that they need to accommodate in a project. What's the avenue for that, if there's any ability? Planning staff, officials, how to respond to community concerns, how to implement general plan policies or county policies that sometimes might have competing priorities. Also, protection of community character, environmental resources, what the appropriate process for evaluating all that. And then residents and business owners, what can be done on a property? Again, how long it takes, what that process for input is, and really, when is there a final answer? So overall, it's really about finding the right balance. And with the regulations, like how much flexibility is important versus predictability? How much does the standard add to development costs versus the quality that you're going to get out of it? So whenever we go through these exercises, we really look at it as finding the least amount of rules possible to get the job done. And for Calaveras County, that's going to be different than it is anywhere else. And so that's a lot of the conversation that we have as we go through in updating the standards and the regulations. So like I said, we talked to some code users to get some input and perspective from people familiar... from people familiar with the code of, from their perspective, what some issues were, and those are included in the code analysis memo. But there were some kind of common themes that came out through all these conversations. And particularly, one of them was clarifying the code. Make sure that the code and the standards, it's easy to navigate, it's understandable, it's consistently applied, consistently interpreted, that there's flexibility, particularly for uses and use of property. And that kind of goes along with another theme, which was allowing mixed use and incorporate provisions to address contemporary uses. And some mentioned where, you know, small-scale agriculture, retreats, home businesses, is to make sure that, as the nature of kind of land use changes, that the code keeps up with it. Overall, the comments were that the existing development standards were generally adequate, generally appropriate. Parking always gets comments whenever we do these exercises. And there are some thoughts that parking requirements should be adjusted to reflect different contexts. And I know one person said, you know, where there's not enough parking, where you need parking, and there's too much parking where, you know, not a lot of parking necessary. And then, overall, clarifying the review process and making that less onerous. And a lot of what we heard from code users kind of was in line with our observations. And we categorize our observations kind of in four main issue areas, which are described in the analysis memo, and I'll summarize here. First and foremost, and again, we heard this from code users, we heard it from staff, is our observation was that the code really needs to be easier to use and understand. Usability was the biggest issue. So overall, the organization's not intuitive, things that maybe should be grouped together aren't, there's redundancy, the regulations really aren't clear, and that there's this feeling that you could spend, you could read every word in the code, you could go through the whole thing, and you still wouldn't really feel like you understood all of the rules that applied or the requirements. There might be something hidden in there that somebody might find out later. So the recommendation is make the code easier to use and understand, have a new organization that really, so people can tell from first looking at the code, what, how a property can be used, how it needs to be built, and what that review process is. And there are some other recommendations for cleanup, simplifying the regulations, providing clear definitions. You have a lot of uses and terms that should be defined and, in fact, are not. Update language, and then just general appearance to the text, the presentation of the regulations, and graphic illustration as well. The second kind of topic of issues we see with the code is the general plan implementation. And this is not surprising, since you have a recent general plan update. And that general plan really sets the vision for the community moving forward. And while there are updates for your zoning code necessary to implement the general plan, it's important to remember that your general plan, while it was updated, was not a whole kind of revisioning of, you know, the vision for the county. There's a lot of continuance of kind of the current vision, the current land use pattern. So it's not a wholesale rezoning of the county. But there are some kind of cleanups that, or new zones that are called for in your, the general plan, including a historic center and an open space ordinance for a district. But with the update, there's also the opportunity to streamline and kind of clean up some of your existing combining designated districts and overlay zones. So through the code update, we look for an opportunity of, and this is part of that, simplifying the code rather than having a lot of different layers to it. We're trying to just have things in one place or stay at once versus, again, just kind of layering on requirements. The second part to look at for general plan implementation are the development standards and the use regulations. So again, overall, it doesn't seem that your development standards are actually, they seem fine, they seem adequate. There weren't a lot of problems that rose to the surface with them. But your general plan does have policies for looking at lighting, landscaping, signage, solar ray, parking, and some other development standards. So we'll be looking at updating those consistent with that general plan direction. As well as use regulations, making sure that the uses that are allowed in each of your zoning districts really matches the purpose of those coordinating land use designations in your general plan. And also recognizing some contemporary uses and making sure that there's enough flexibility in your definitions of uses so that as new and different kind of types of uses come out, everyone kind of knows where it fits within the hierarchy. And then finally, non-conforming provisions. So these are the provisions for how to use this or development that, you know, was legal at the time it was built and was consistent with the regulations in place. But over time, as those regulations have changed, you know, that existing development no longer meets the standards. And when we used to look at non-conforming provisions, we kind of took this very, you know, one-size-fits-all approach. If it doesn't meet the current standards, it, you know, we need to get rid of it. We need to limit what it can do. And as we move on with that, we see maybe a more nuanced approach is required where, sure, there may be some uses that are noxious, don't fit in the community anymore, and those you want to see phase out over time. But there might be other non-conforming development that adds to community character. If you have an old residence in a commercial area, or if you have a building that's not conforming towards setbacks, but it really, you know, adds to that character of that area, then we can look at provisions for allowing those types of non-conformities to really be treated than, you know, some of the other more problematic ones. And also looking at the review process. So the development review procedures really establish that procedural environment for the county to achieve, you know, its goals and its policies in the general plan. If they're vague, if they're confusing, they can frustrate applicants, they frustrate community members, they can frustrate staff, they can frustrate decision-makers, and it can really hinder the county's ability to attract the type of investment you want to see. So conversely, if you have a clear path, if it's predictable, there's clear what the process is, what the timeline is, and the time for public input, then people can make appropriate decisions. And that can help promote that good development, it can help promote trust in the process. So for all of the administrative provisions, they should be clarified, and they should be clear what that process is. The timeline, who's making the review, the public input process. But also through this process, there's the opportunity to adjust those review thresholds where appropriate, considering, you know, if new standards are introduced into the code, then maybe you can lower that level of review. Or if there's some things that maybe go to the planning commission or go to the board of supervisors for decision, but, you know, they're kind of routine, and maybe they could be made at a lower level. So as we go through the process, we will be looking at input on those types of things. Are there's things that are currently decided upon by one body that maybe could be decided upon by another? And then finally, you know, local jurisdictions have a lot of authority over the land use regulations, but there are some things that the state and the federal law kind of limits our ability or kind of tells us how we need to treat certain things. And we're just cognizant of that as we go through the process. And you might hear us saying sometimes, well, it's this way because of state law or because of some things of protected use under, under federal law. So up on the screen, that's just the kind of topic areas of a lot of the ones that are particularly something that we pay attention to. You probably have had conversations on some of these already, particularly accessory dwelling units and so on. But we just point these out, and as we go through the process, we're cognizant of it. And again, there'll be times you'll be hearing from us, well, this is this way because of state or federal law. So with that, that's a summary of, again, our initial assessment, observations, and we'd like to hear from you if, you know, that was kind of in line with, with your thoughts, were there things that we missed, or if there's anything else that, from your perspective, you want to make sure we're aware of as we continue on the process with staff.
Thank you, Ms. Miller. Is there anything else, Peter or Gina, that you would like to bring up? I believe Gina's still on here, so, Peter or Gina, you would like to bring up before I bring it back to the board?
No, we really don't have anything else. That, again, is just sort of an overview of the process that we're going through. As Martha had indicated, we're early on in the process still, but we're diving deep into the details of writing the ordinance itself. But again, trying to find out, you know, what needs to be fixed, what doesn't need to be fixed. And so just, this is an opportunity for to get feedback from you. We will be posting the analysis on our department website for the public to, you know, read at their leisure. It's informative about, you know, some of the current deficiencies of our, of our code and what we need to do and how to move forward with it. I don't have anything else to add, but certainly able to try to answer any questions you might have.
Excellent, thank you, Mr. Moore. Board members, I'll take some opening questions from you prior to going to public comment, and then we will delve more into it at the end of public comment. So is there anybody that would like to speak up? Gary, you have your hand up.
Yes, thank you, Chair Stoppa. My question is, going through this whole presentation, and thank you for the presentation, but is this process completely rewriting Title 17? We're not going to just go through step-by-step on Title 17 and each one of them and have the board opportunity to make their comments in each, each one of those Title 17 divisions? Or are you just simply going to rewrite, totally rewrite Title 17 and then bring it to it based on other people's observations and other people's comments? I was unclear on what direction you were going to go in when it comes back to this board.
It is a comprehensive rewrite, but I think we'll be taking them as bite-sized pieces. So there will be issues that we will need to get policy direction on. And so with those, we'll be going, you know, we'll be coming to the board, you know, for, for direction on that. But you will be seeing at the end a completely rewritten zoning codes, reorganized in a fashion that makes it a little more user-friendly. But there are some issues we will definitely need to get board direction on before we just go out and start writing the code. So it's sort of a yes and no answer to you, Gary. You know, part of it, we will definitely want to come back to you before we get too, too deep into the weeds on it. But others, I think we have some general direction of what we need to do as the general plan has, has provided for us.
Well, hopefully, certainly, we can clarify a lot of the vagueness in some of the places that we have that have created major problems for us, and that's my concerns in, when it comes back to us, if you go down through them, through housing and so forth, that we can have our comments before we have a final product that we have adopted. So those are my comments at the time.
Yes, we will definitely be doing that. And in fact, if you have, you know, concerns you want to provide to me, you know, any, any particular issues that you're concerned about, you know, I welcome that early on in the process. This is a legislative act, so there is some flexibility as far as communication with staff on concerns and issues that you have. So if there's anything that's really burning, we'd rather hear it sooner rather than later so we can address those early on in the process.
Acceptable farming practices. Clarification, completely. Okay, that's just one of them, but that's a major one.
Yep.
Are there any other board questions or statements?
Mr. Stoppa, you mentioned questions now and then something later.
Yeah.
What is it you want us to say now versus later?
You know what, you have every opportunity to say everything you want to now. I was just giving everyone the option to say something before public comment or after.
Got it. Oh, got it, okay. Ms. Miller, I thought the analysis was really well-done. I appreciate the analysis that was sent, part of our board packet. I did have some questions about some specific areas, but maybe, as Mr. Mauer said, there's something we should, I should send to him. An example would be affordable housing near major transportation hubs. I don't think that's something that exists in a rural county. A major transportation hub for us is a bus stop location, which we have. There's no hubs like you have in the rural areas, so, I mean, excuse me, the urban areas. So I didn't know if those would be modified for what exists in a rural area, of course, Calaveras. The state law regarding manufactured housing versus CCNRs. I know we don't enforce CCNRs, but there's frequently in many of the subdivisions a dichotomy. So is that, or should that be part of the zoning code, since that is an issue that, at least in the Ebbets Pass corridor, has come up fairly frequently? Telecommunications on page 22 of your analysis. It deals with wireless, is that wireless only or with towers? Because, so, I don't know. Mr. Mauer, these are things maybe I should just talk offline with you on?
Well, no, there's certainly, I mean, we can talk about it now, or if you want to get into a more detailed discussion, we can talk about that further.
Those were just, happened to be some, and I have more, which I won't go into, just some red flag things that I read when I read Ms. Miller's analysis.
And those all sort of relate to various state laws that we're working under. Fortunately, the state has sort of recognized that, you know, there are differences between urban areas and rural areas from some of the housing issues. That was something that I've been working on with the state legislature for, you know, the last several years, try to, you know, have them recognize that, you know, one-size-fits-all. So, you know, we will need to tailor, you know, our code to meet our requirements. You know, we don't have major transportation hubs as defined in state law, so, you know, but we do need to provide our fair share of affordable housing for our community members. As far as, you know, CCNRs and manufactured housing, you know, we, we cannot at the county level restrict someone from putting in manufactured housing. But, you know, private development still has the ability to, you know, to restrict or constrain or, you know, dictate the style of housing within a development. But that is something that they would have to enforce rather than us. And I think it goes down a slippery slope to start putting code requirements for private development, for, you know, private deed restrictions into our code and that we start enforcing that. I would strongly not recommend that we do that. We leave that to the homeowners associations or other, you know, agencies that want to do that. And then there are a lot of rules regarding public utilities and, you know, transmission towers, infrastructure, transmission, water, sewer, that the state regulates, that we are limited on. So, you know, telecommunications includes both power, telephone, you know, wired and wireless communications that will need to be consistent with state law.
So, do I understand that your, that the zoning code, I don't want to put a pronoun on it, is going to be like a matrix system? I mean, I like the idea that there'll be visuals versus reading, but... versus reading, but is that it would be a matrix so that you'd have parking and setbacks or what have you and all the things that we're complaining?
Yeah, there will be a number of tables and matrices within the code. One of the main things would be like the permitted land uses. So if you have a land use, say you want to put in a retail grocery store, you could go down the list and see what zones that's allowed in or where it might require a use permit, all on one page or, you know, on a series of pages, rather than having to, you know, go through each different section. Is it permitted here and read through the long list? Oh, it's not on that list. It'll be much more accessible to the users, to staff, to be able to say, oh, here's a use. And it will be more general in nature as far as how that use is described. So, you know, we won't be listing things, you know, by each different type of business, but more by how that business fits in the community as far as its type of impact. So if you have retail businesses, we don't really care what type of retail business it is, but it's going to be, you know, a, you know, a retail store. And it might be differentiated by size and scale as opposed to what's being sold. Now, in some cases, what's being sold is important. So for example, if it's a liquor store, that may have different impacts than a candy store. And so we'll be looking at all of these uses, combining them into groups that are similar and defining them that way. And then those that have unique characteristics that need to be differentiated, those will also be listed. Martha, I hope, you know, give a nod, yes, if I'm on the right track here. So that's the intent that we have. I mean, you know, I think that we have like 130 different uses listed in the C2 zone. We don't need that many precise listing of the different types of businesses that can go in that in that zone. So it'll be streamlined in that way, and then it'll be really visually accepted, or that's what I'm looking for, easy to use by the staff, by the public, by decision-makers. You know, is that use allowed in this zone? What other zones is it allowed in? So if there's a guy that wants to open up a business in the county, he can find out, you know, quickly which zones it's permitted in, and then they can go out and look for that site in order to locate that business.
Okay. I have others, but I'll do that on the sidebar. Thank you.
Thank you, Marita. Anyone else on the board have any comments prior to our public comment? Okay, I'll move on to public comment.
Yes, Chair Stoppard, we have Gina Gonzalez.
Thank you. Hello, Gina.
Happy New Year, everybody, and congratulations to the new board members and your positions. I'm very proud to say that I am looking forward to the 21th year, as I know everybody else is. The question I have on the zoning, if we have a liquor store, just, I know this is Angels Camp, but a liquor store that previously had zoning as being authorized, and the new zoning comes up and it's not authorized, do they have to apply for a permit to re-license? Or how does that work if it was previously okayed and then the new zoning will not allow it? Is that going to happen?
So typically with a non-conforming use, there are policies in the general plan that says that those are allowed to continue operation as long as they're, you know, basically within the same use that was there before. Now, as Martha had pointed out earlier, there are some uses that the county may decide that, you know, we need to phase those out over time. But for the most part, and the policies of the general plan really say, you know, legally established uses, we want those to be able to continue to operate. No, we would not require them to come in for a special permit typically. The only time that it would be if they wanted, if that use wanted to expand for some reason or modify to some other use, and then typically go through a use permit process to do that. But continued operation of an existing legal non-conforming use would just simply allow me to continue to operate.
Thank you. I look forward to this very much, and I will have my eyes on it. Thank you and Happy New Year, everybody.
Thank you, Gina. Any other public comments?
No other public comments at this time.
Okay, so we'll bring the meeting back to the board. Are there any further comments by the board members? Gary, you have your hand up. Sorry, it took me a second to see it.
That's okay. Thank you, Chair Stoppard. Peter, you're going to have all this accomplished by a certain date in March?
Well, I'm going to leave it in good hands. Gina's on the floor to carry on, and I know that Martha will work with whoever my successor is going to be. And hopefully, we'll get someone that's more talented than me to come in here and wrap these things up.
That's a stretch, Peter.
Well, I appreciate it. Yeah.
He can make a condition of his departure, Gary.
I think we should vote unanimously as the board to do that, Mr. Guaramendi.
That's a good point. Yes.
Is there anything else?
We don't have anything else up.
Mr. Guaramendi, do you have anything?
Yes, sir.
Ms. Follendorf?
Okay, I will bring up Peter. I just, I just have one question. I mean, it's pretty good Supervisor Toffenelli and Marita addressed their issues. I think they covered most of the things. As we move forward, we all received a letter from one of my constituents within my district, you know, that's been a, let's just call frequent flyer when it comes to the, everything, when it comes to the general plan, the open space element. I mean, can we address a little bit of that and how we're going about doing that with this so that, you know, just, it's all, all the facts are out there, Mr. Moore?
Well, yes. In fact, I have just submitted an item to discuss the general plan implementation priorities to come up in two weeks now. And so that's probably the better time to talk about implementing, implementing the general plan, you know, outside of the zoning code. We do have a requirement that we've identified to create an open space zone. And I think Ms. Eller has, you know, brought up, you know, an issue that, yeah, we need to, we need to be looking at, needs to be, you know, within that list of priorities that we need to be, to be considering in the, in the, in the near future.
Very good, Peter. I appreciate it. With that, you know, this, this is informational item only. So, you know, as long as everyone's good, we'll move on to the next item.
Great. Thank you very much.
You have a good day, and thank you, Ms. Miller, and thank you, Ms. Catherine.
Thank you.
Okay, so let me, so the next item, there, my apologies, I got to go back up to my main agenda.
Chair Stoppard, would you like me to read them? Twenty-seven and twenty are items by us, the clerk of the Board of Supervisors?
Absolutely. Go ahead and read 27, and we'll work on 27.
Item 27, we have assigned members of the board as supervisors to various committees for the calendar year of 2021. I believe that we provided each supervisor a list of the assignments. So we just would like to know what changes may need to be made, and of course, what committee's supervisor, Follendorf, would like to sign up for.
Okay, let's see. I have my, my list here in front of me on the board agenda. Can we exercise this item by item? We'll start with Area 12 on agency, move down the list, and go that route to make sure that we got everything covered here.
I'm happy with everything that I'm on.
I am also, Marita. I would like to hear from the other supervisors.
Well, can I make a proposal here, Mr. Chair?
Absolutely.
I would propose that we, just before we go in each one, down each one, that we just say that if everything remains the same, with the exception of where it says mills, that you put Follendorf there, and then we can, if there's any individual ones that people want to discuss, then we can discuss changing those. Otherwise, going down each one of them is going to take
Two hours.
Most of the day, a discussion for each one of them. If we just go status quo and change mills, and then if there's anybody else wants to discuss changing the position, then we can do that on specific items.
I concur, Mr. Toffenelli. That's a good suggestion. We'll go that route, and then we'll let any individual supervisor pull any certain thing that they have issues with, and we can discuss it there. So, yes, sir.
Ben, Mr. Chair, sorry, getting used to these new titles. Mr. Chair, I would like to know, you know, I'm good with this plan, too. It's easy. I think we're all comfortable with our committees. But if there are committees in particular that Supervisor Follendorf is interested because of her personal interests or professional, she really wants, I would of course be willing to work with her on any of those. And I'd also think we ought to probably at least address briefly NACO, a committee we haven't filled in a couple of years, whether we want to take that up again or not.
Good, good points, Mr. Guaramendi. So we're going to pull NACO, and then we're going to give Supervisor Follendorf the opportunity to discuss anything that she's uncomfortable with or something she would be more comfortable with. So I think most of the other boards are comfortable, board members are comfortable at the time with where they're at. So Ms. Follendorf?
I'm happy switching to fill in where Mills is at. I believe the only one which he was on would be COG and GTA. So I think that, that answers that question. But I have a question for Chairman Stoppard and Mr. Toffenelli for the East Side, San Joaquin GSA. Since those are primarily in your, that's primarily in your districts, is there any interest for either one of you to be on that? If not, I am happy to fill that.
I pretty, I pretty think.
Go ahead, Gary. Sorry.
I'm sorry, Chair. I was going to say Ben would be a better fit there because that's, he basically works, that's his job outside of being a supervisor, is CCWD, and that's their forte. He would know more about it than I, although I will sit in if that's the case.
I personally would appreciate if you would sit in, Gary. Just, you know, I want to tread those liners, those waters lightly right now, just because of crossing over with different jobs. I just, you know, I don't need to make any waves that don't need to be made in the middle of this. You know, so I would appreciate you taking it, sir.
That's not, I'll do, I'll do so.
Okay. And Amanda, if you would consider, you know, being Gary's alternate for that?
Yeah, that's fine. I just figured since it primarily in your guys' district, that would be more.
You have, you have a very good point, and, you know, and I understand exactly that. And I would, if there's any questions moving forward, you're both more than free to reach out to me as any one individual, so we don't violate the Brown Act on that issue. But no, I appreciate you both taking that on. Is there anyone else that would like to bring anything else up?
I would just like to say to Amanda, Amanda, part of that district is, reaches in the copper area down, going down towards that line down there. So it is somewhat in your district, a small portion of it down towards Milton Road, but it is there.
Yes, it just, the last meeting I watched, the two of you had very vested interests in commenting, so I just want to make sure you get those relayed to the committee directly.
It's, it's fine, Amanda. So let's discuss NACO.
Mr. Chair, I believe we're members of it, right? I mean, somebody told me the other day that
Yes, through Health and Human Services.
Right.
Yeah.
I mean, I just don't want to be us left out of the conversation. I think we're making good progress with STAC and RCRC, and they've been great. And we haven't paid much attention to NACO, so I just want to see where everybody's at.
Health and Human Services pay the dues for NACO. We don't. So we might want to ask Health and Human Services if they would want to be the representative, which I'm sure they don't.
Unless, unless you have an interest, Mr. Guaramendi.
Well, I haven't been there, so I'm watching it. I'm glad that in the time of COVID, we don't have to travel very far. But I have a lot, I've got a lot of stuff that we've been working on with our regional forest service on trying to get some programs going, and some of their larger water interstate issues do have some impact on Calaveras. Just want to keep an eye on it.
Okay, dibs. You're it, Mr. Guaramendi.
You're it. I, I, I thirded, backed her in.
Is there going to be, because you didn't appoint for this prior, is there going to be an alternate for this? And or do we just want to have Mr. Leach or whoever the Health and Human Services Director is back, Mr. Guaramendi, up on that? How do we want to do this? What's legitimate?
I think, I think Supervisor Follendorf ought to be part of this as well. She's not on a big, on a statewide commission yet. So I think
Done.
This is national.
National. Come on, Amanda.
Done. That's fine.
I hope so, because I just said yes for you. So I'm going to have to, right, we're going to, we're going to have to, you know, if we're, if we're all good with where we're at right now, I'm going to give the public an opportunity to comment.
Chair Stoppard, I do not see any public comments at this time.
All right. Board clerk, have we taken note on what changes have been made? I mean, they've been very slight, but.
Yes. And so I'm just verifying that Supervisor Guaramendi will be the board rep for NACO.
That, that's what's proposed. We're going to still have to vote on that. And then the alternate would be Ms. Follendorf.
Okay.
And then the other one I took down is the East Side GSA, Eastern San Joaquin, you know, GSA. That, that's, the first person would be Mr. Toffenelli, and the alternate would be Ms. Follendorf.
No.
I think those are the only two changes we made. Am I correct?
Correct.
Okay. And then with the replacement of the Mills name with the Follendorf name on everything else. And I will entertain a motion.
The move, the move is secure.
I'm going to give, I'm going to give this one to you, Mr. Toffenelli. Mr. Guaramendi, you want a second? Thank you, sir. So we have first by Mr. Toffenelli, second by Mr. Guaramendi. We'll roll call District 1.
Yes.
District 2.
Your right.
District 3. You're muted.
Yes.
District 4.
Yes.
And just five, a yes that passes 5-0. Thank you all. I think we want to probably power through this final item, being it's 12, but we'll get through this final item on boards and committees. So, the appointment of applicants to serve specific terms necessary for these entities to be able to perform their duties as required. So the appointment of applicants to serve specific terms necessary for these entities to be able to perform their duties as required. Go back up the agenda. Well, Clerk, you were going to read these for me. I apologize.
So yes, item number twenty-eight is appoint of applicants to serve on various committees, commissions, advisory boards, and county service areas. If the board wishes, I can read each agency or committee that has applicants that were vacancies. There is one listed in your staff memo.
Yeah, this would take quite some time and interest of time. I would go ahead and say that I have read it. I'll listen to my other board members. But let's see if there's any one person that needs to be pulled throughout the process. I hear silence from my fellow board members, so I think we would probably are okay with what's being put forward at this time. I'm going to entertain time for a public comment right now.
I am not seeing any public comment at this time.
Yeah, the attendees really went down. Oh, wait, there's a hand up in attendees.
Oh, it's Ms. Galino.
Ms. Kathy Galino.
Happy going out, Caldas County Economic and Community Development. Just want to reach out and let you know that we've had a few vacancies on our Parks and Recreation Commission. And in District Four, Supervisor Follendorf, that's your district. And District One, Supervisor Toffenelli, that's your district. So if there's any way I can help facilitate getting applications in, it's pretty easy. It's online. I can email forms out, but would love to have some more participants on that commission. That's it.
Thank you, Kathy. I think that's very important moving forward. We have some good opportunities coming up to facilitate some money moving towards some more parks and recreation. That said, is there any other public comments?
No other public comments.
Would that all entertain a motion?
So have.
Thank, thank, thank you, Ms. Coway. Well, do we have a second?
Second.
Jack, you got, you got the pumps that time, so a second. So roll, roll call, District One. Yes. District Two.
District Two, aye.
District Three.
Yes.
District Four.
Aye.
District Five is an aye, so that's passes five oh. Okay, so with that done, we do supervisors announcements in compliance for government code five three two three two point three. Board members shall provide brief reports on any meetings attended at the expense of the local agency and may make other announcements or report out. So District One, Mr. Toffenelli.
I don't have, yeah, I don't have a lot to report. I just want to say happy birthday Supervisor Stoffer. And I'm sorry you had to deal with the product when you got up first thing this morning. And Marita, I gotta tell you, this whole time with, with behind you, every time you spoke and it, and it showed you, it's like smoke is coming out of the back of your head. So it was like you were in deep thought. Good job. And that's all I have.
Okay, District Two, Mr. Guermandi.
Not to report, Mr. Chair, happy birthday, Ben, and welcome aboard, Amanda. Look forward to working with you.
Thank you, Jack, and, you know, don't accidentally call me while you do offline, so.
That's okay. I did see your palm throw up, but congratulations for your two ayes.
Thank you, sir. District Three, Ms. Coway.
Nothing.
Good to see you. District Four, Ms. Follendorf.
Happy birthday, Chair, and I look forward to working with everyone, both board and staff. So thank you for welcoming me aboard.
It's good to, it's good to have you here, Ms. Follendorf. District Five, I, you know, just want to thank everyone for today. I know, you know, I did call, roll call each, each vote, but just going through other meetings with other people just is more clear which each board member votes. And, you know, it gives them the opportunity to speak on or why they're voting. It's something I prefer if anybody wants to talk to me about that. I can, I'm willing to bend for changes in the future. At this time, you know, I do think it's the best way to proceed. With that said, Happy New Year. It's good to see everyone. I hope everyone's healthy and safe. And we'll shut the meeting down, but I want to stay on here with everyone for just a second to discuss where we're not discuss, but just say what, what's next on the health thing. So that we decide whether we're going to do lunch or not. So that, that's today's meeting. Thank you. We're adjourned.
Thank you, Susan.